We have three senior senators.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The regular council meeting of the City of East Cleveland. It is now Tuesday, May 19, 6:30. Madam Clerk, would you all be...
Counselor King?
Present.
Counselor Martin?
Present.
Counselor Baker? Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Thomas, we have a forum?
Present.
We have a forum.
Next item on the agenda, please.
Remarks of public on agenda items only. Fifteen minute time limit. Three minutes per person, please.
You may start now, Mr. O'May.
Thank you. Ordinance 2915, emergency ordinance in reference to ambulance saying can the fees increase for providing a service? Can anyone tell me what the fees are now and what are you increasing them to and how much, et cetera? Just have on here. I don't know whether you have it in your legislation or not, but here in this preamble does not say anything, so I would like to know why you need an increase. Secondly, how much is the increase? And I want at least I want my question answered, and this is the public and the public need to know that. So if you impose us something upon us, it's your responsibility to inform us and how it affect us. So I just want you to answer those questions. And the audio for that right now, but I really want those questions asked.
I'm sorry there's not any more in the chair because all of you should have... Is there a bag there?
What is that in the preamble?
Gladys Walcott, 133193rd Avenue, East Cleveland. Resolution 3015. This is city collect many of our broadsies from this company, and it's exciting to know somebody's coming to our city and doing something, so we will have revenue, but I would like to know if you're getting a broadsies down the road on safety issues.
Any more on speaking on agenda items only?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like clarification of the terminology BLS, ALS, ALS-2.
For the girl's brothers.
Yeah.
Just want to know if this, how much of this stuff is still put as emergency for safety, health, and wealth, welfare of people? Because I think I saw the thing for Helenus Brown put as an emergency. It's not an emergency. And the thing for Dan Ray, it's certainly not an emergency. And I just want to know, are we changing it or are we going to try and put it through as an emergency? And does it affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of East Cleveland?
Thank you. Chief Will Cox?
Yes.
Not yet. Just follow the comments and we'll have it in the lecture.
Oh, one, okay. All right. No more speaking, public speaking on the agenda items only. Next item on the...
Foot announcements.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, and banquet. It's nice to be here as always. Thank you, Madam President, for having the fire chief up next, because I think it's probably better when you can just talk about the legislation and hold.
Thank you. I had to add, there was a...
A couple of the acronyms that were thrown out. ALS is advanced life support. BLS is basic life support. BLS run is relatively simple life support ambulance services that are provided by firefighters slash medic. Advanced life support is a little bit more advanced and sophisticated care for someone who's in a little bit worse shape, and that can only be provided by a paramedic, an actual licensed certified paramedic is the one who provides advanced life support services. If the staff that we have there does not include a paramedic, then generally it's basic life support services. So I hope that clarifies, and again, the fire chief can probably illuminate some of that. The City of East Cleveland had a couple of good things happen. We recently received fire truck donated by the City of Mentor, and we treat it as a donation. It's actually a purchase in the future, once the city is out of fiscal emergency and things like that, so down the line, the fire truck is here. It's a pumper, which is the actual type of fire truck where firefighters hook it up to a hydrant, pump the water, seems to fight fires, so that's actually a piece of firefighting apparatus. Secondly, very important, our ambulance is run more frequently than our firefighters do, so we're in need of ambulances. The City of Mentor also contributed to our team today and others, which helps for a short period of time make sure that they're reliable and available vehicles when we receive those high saving services. As we all know, Cuyahoga County recently sued almost $1 million in demolition to demolish what we planned to be 107 structures in the City of East Cleveland. That's the news. Vacant and abandoned and dilapidated and so forth, certainly the things that people need. The Dan Ray company lease at the service department, the service yard, as council knows, there is already the company operating at our service department. The lease on tonight's agenda is to expand that operation to get the enrollment to operate. You receive a fee, monthly rent, for that space, and the monthly rent will increase as the space increases if council approves this action for this use. Thank you.
And I would like to say to Chief Will Cox, he looked pretty good representing us on TV this evening. I don't, you can watch the news, but I did watch it.
Speak up or we could hear you.
I was saying that our chief, Chief Will Cox, looked pretty good today as he talked about the trucks that were being given to the City of East Cleveland. He represented us well. Thank you very much. Move it right along, Madam President.
Reports and announcements on council committees?
Counselor Matt King?
Thank you, Council President. I have no committee appoint, no new committee appoint.
Thank you. Counselor Matt, if I had your pardon?
Personal appointments, I don't have anything really new. I can't confirm this, maybe the American idea that one or two employees is leaving the city. One is, I was told while I was walking through the hall here today, that our human resource person is leaving the city. Okay, so our numbers is going down. That's it.
Counselor Matt, Phil Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Contracts and properties committee met, and we discussed the lease of Dan Ray construction. We also discussed East Cleveland Neighborhood Center and their potential occupancy at the Helenus Brown Center, and also legislation regarding vacant property registration, which we could enact to do some code enforcement and possibly weigh in on these banks and other corporate entities that are negligent in their, negligent in taking care of their city property that they own. And also, we also discussed some code enforcement with the building and housing department issuing tickets as they come across citations in the ticket book.
Thanks, Jim. Vice President Dick?
Good evening, everyone. Just to give you an update, we've received back one of our, some of our fire footers. We got more stuff coming, so that was a good new, great new share. Next committee meeting, I'll bring everybody up to date with what's happening.
Thank you. At the last meeting, I reported that we had, the council had engaged the firm Buckley and King LPA to represent the council and to look for more options other than annex it to the City of Cleveland. Since being retained late last month, Buckley King has identified and contacted several firms, including ones with national or regional experience in matters such as this, to see whether they would be interested in performing the analysis city council seeks, namely to assess all the city's options, to identify which of those options are or are not viable, and to explain why, and to make recommendations regarding which course of action would be best for East Cleveland and its residents. Two of the firms contacted us far have, and so far have expressed and assert a serious desire to be considered by the city for this project. We are reviewing pertinent information about the city to help develop their proposals for the city council evaluation. A third firm also has expressed its interest in being considered, provided that the necessary fund for project is raised first. Other candidates have yet to respond one way or the other. Once the interested firms have provided estimates of what they anticipate their work will cost, Buckley King will be able to make formal requests to potential funding sources in an effort to raise the amount of money necessary to pay for this initiative. In the meantime, Buckley King has contacted several entities that has expressed willingness to contribute funds to pay for this project. Buckley King also is addressing the mechanism regarding how the funds are to be properly handled and administered. As Buckley King's work progresses, we will continue to refer to the council. This was reported by myself at the last council meeting. Also, I met with Buckley and King a week ago, week and a half ago, and all this was relayed to me. Again, this firm is being engaged by the council on a pro bono situation. There is no money that has to be dealt with from the council. Also, I want to let everybody know that I had the opportunity of going to Columbus and dealing with our shelter, the Broken Connection. The Broken Connection was awarded $185,000. And they received the award from the government. Also, Broken Connections, Inc. was given the honor of being at the Rotunda at the State House at the dinner. And I just wanted to let you all know that it was put on by Finance Fund. The Finance Fund was the individuals that had this dinner for seven, several recipients, and only three of those were awarded. One was African American and came from the City of East Cleveland. And they also came to East Cleveland and did a video, and I am really happy to have Broken Connection that has been struggling so far and so long to save our kids that are falling through the cracks and are homeless. I want to thank everyone for coming, and I want to thank you for indulging me in my report. Madam Clerk, move it right along.
Proclamation, proclamation of appreciation and recognition of Mr. Leon Hines.
Mr. Leon Hines is present. Mr. Hines, would you come forward? Mr. Hines is someone we know very well, and that I know very well, and I'm sure everybody else knows him very well. He is the coach. Everybody calls him Coach. Mr. Hines, we are giving you a proclamation of appreciation and recognition, and I'd like to read it if I may. Whereas the East Cleveland City Council wishes to honor Leon Hines for his 39 years of service, hard work, and dedication to Shaw High School, East Cleveland community and its residents from 1977 to 2015. Whereas Leon Hines, during his 39 years of service as a teacher, has taught over 4,000 students, teaching three generations of family, parents, children, and grandchildren, and he has taught every history course ever developed in the high school. My God. Whereas Leon Hines had the assistant, was an assistant to Walter Gilliam from 1979 to 1992, coaching freshmen in junior varsity. Leon Hines went on to become head coach in 1992 to 1993, starting the legendary Red Ball Express Cardinal. During his time as coach, the Cardinal Red Ball Express went to five regional, won five LEL titles, which also produced many talented students who were awarded scholarships to colleges. During this time, he also was athletic coordinator for the Diamond Program developed by the East Cleveland School District, and would become the all-time leader in wins for Shaw High men's basketball with 268 wins. And whereas Leon Hines also created an academic program called SHAAC, which mean, which meant Shaw High School Academic Achievement Committee. It was a program in which the senior, junior male students with a GPA of 3.0 were given the task of monitoring incoming ninth grade males. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the East Cleveland City Council, on behalf of the entire city and all its residents with overwhelming pride, thank Coach Leon Hines for his long and faithful service. Shaw High School, East Cleveland community, we extend our best wishes to him for a happy, prosperous, and long retirement. I'd like to say that Mr. Hines is well-known out in the community for his great ability and his creative sense of fitness for his landscaping. He is phenomenal. He is, if you look at my house, he does my landscape, of course, with a paint. And he has done pro bono work for the city. He has helped in gardening. I have a garden over on Superior, which Mr. Hines put together for me, and his intent, he says, is to make it a cold-drill garden that will be phenomenal. And I want to thank you. I really appreciate all the work that you have done in the community of East Cleveland. Anyone like this, please?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for graduating you, Coach Hines. Did have the pleasure of participating in the Shack program that she spelled out in resolution. That program is very instrumental in guiding the ninth grade male students as they're, as they're articulated through the ninth grade. It really helped me boost my GPA. I really appreciate your service to the community. You've helped me on numerous projects within the community to clean up and make, beautify our, our situation that we have, the tall grass and the breeze all over the place. So I appreciate you for that. Thirty-nine years, long dedicated service, long time of dedicated service, and you've touched many, many lives, and I wish you the best as you go on with your endeavors, sir. I think you are partly responsible for the successes that have come up with it.
Anyone else speaking?
I just would concur. Brother Hines, thank you for your 39 years. Good luck to your future endeavors. Thank you for working with our young people, which is always our future. God bless you, brother.
Thank you.
Coach, I'll jump in too.
Since he retired, that means I call you and give you some more work to do, right?
I'm here.
I'm first.
Coach, it's been a great run. I remember you at Shaw. I never knew you started in 77. Thanks for all your work in the city. I see you out here, I see you all the time anyway, right?
It's a great pleasure that I present this proclamation to you. I would be remiss if I didn't ask you if there's anything that you would like to say to the residents of East Cleveland and the council and the mayor?
I would definitely, I'm standing in front of my students, in front of my other students and another student, and just so many people in here in my life, and another, again, a parent of one of my students back here. So my 39 years here in East Cleveland has been a gift, and I try to make sure that I give back to the community, because without this community, I would not have or be the man that I am today. So with that, I want to thank East Cleveland, all the residents of East Cleveland, the school board, and this magnificent city, and may it last for a long, long time. It's been a dream, and you have a community like this, for it to stay, stay as East Cleveland. So I hope that happens. I want it to happen, and I'm going to make sure I'm part of it.
Thank you.
All right. A letter from Ms. Ruby Chesterfield?
This was asked for us to deal with Ms. Chesterfield by a resident, Ms., resident and PAC, and one of my PAC sisters is sitting here, Gladys Walcott. Ms. Ruby M. Chesterfield, East Cleveland City Council would like to take the time to extend our condolences to your family concerning the recent loss of your loved one, Ruby M. Chesterfield, dear wife, the late William Henry Chesterfield, beloved mother of Sandra Jill Watson, dear friend, Robert Wilson, Reynolds, Cheryl L., Robert Lewis, Jacqueline Mary Marie Wilson, grandmother of Blair Brown and Sean Wilson, great-grandmother of Lauren and Kayla Wilson. The loss of Ruby is one that is felt not just within your immediate family, but also throughout all the great Cleveland, as she was a woman with zest for life and a passion for loving and supporting her family. Ruby gave of herself whatever she had to those that needed it most. She was a true blessing and a joyy, loving person to the family and friends. The legacy she leaves behind speaks for herself, speaks for itself. Her physical presence here on earth will be greatly missed by family, friends, and loved ones. However, her memory will continue to live on in the hearts and minds of her family and East Cleveland community. We encourage you to remember that God's grace is sufficient to see you safely through these difficult times. He knows the depths of your loss and the strength that the great love is freely given to each of you for comfort and support. His promise to all of his children is that he will never leave you, nor will he forsake you. Our prayers are with you and your family. Next.
Legislation, ordinance number 2915, the ordinance increasing emergency medical service ambulance fees and declaring emergency for public safety and welfare. financed by finance directors, sponsored by Counselor Thomas Wheeler.
Vice President Wheeler, this is sponsored by you. What is your request?
That we adopt this, regardless of increasing the fees.
Sponsored.
Yes, increase, increase the fees for the emergency service.
I second the motion.
Disagreement? Yes.
I know the chief is going to respond, but I just want to move to the question that Mr. O'May's asking when he goes through it, but he's going to say they respond to those questions, please. Thank you.
Um, get it down to him. Mayor? The definition of BLAS, just for starters, BLAS is like, like, like the mayor alluded to earlier, is basic life support. Basically, you have, it's not so much who arrived, but it's the basic, it's the service that is given. And that is, you know, if someone hurts their ankle, they get an ace bandage, something like that. It's not an ALS call. There was no internal intervention. There was no, you know, advanced airway intervention. There was no IVs, drugs pushed and that nature. So that would just be what we call a basic life support function. Advanced life support function is where I just mentioned those things are advanced internal intervention. And what that means is that, you know, you know, EKGs, we are also talking about pushing drugs through our intravenously. We also talk about, you know, the narcotics that we use in some of the cases, and that is advanced life support. And those functions can only be provided by a paramedic at that level. If that answers your question. In terms of, in terms of the fees and what they currently are now, the fees at the BLS level is at $375, and ALS level is $475, which are far below the industry standard. And this is important toward the city, because if anyone runs more other than Cleveland itself, EMS itself, East Cleveland, so we need our rigs to run, we need the drugs to push, we need the equipment to take care of our citizens. We run 7,000 runs annually. I mean, I just left Mentor yesterday. They have 24 firefighters on duty, firefight stations, they run 7,700 runs. We're a 1.3 square mile city. We have 10 firefighters on duty, we run 72,000 runs annually. So we need to capitalize on the fact that we need to bring our numbers to the industry standard, and also support with the EMS funding that can help the fire department maintain its equipment and also provide excellent service to the community. I'm just going to let you know, you know, we are widely recognized across the state of Ohio, as an enterprise in the state, you know, regardless of what we go through financially, widely recognized as that department, so.
And Madam President, just a leading question. How do we determine the rates? Do we look at other cities' rates?
Yeah, so other city rates are, you know, are all on par on average. We looked at those rates, and we identified that that's where we would be and where we want to be, is the industry standard. want to be, is the industry standard.
Thank you. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed? There are none, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Counselor King?
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Baker?
Yay.
Counselor Willer?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution number 30-15, resolution authorizing the mayor to expand the lease agreement with Dan Ray Construction LLC for the East Cleveland Waste Transfer Station located at 1650 Eddie Road, 1610, 1626 Eddie Road, and 1602 Eddie Road inclusive. East Cleveland, Ohio, for site development, includes excavation, demolition, and landscaping projects, declaring an emergency requested by Community Development, sponsored by Counselor Mansell Baker.
Counselor Baker, this resolution, what is your pleasure?
After our sponsor, Resolution 30-15, is there a discussion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. There is discussion.
The language I wanted to go with on the record, Counselor Willer. Secondly, one of my colleagues' opinion on this emergency status is that, and also
Well, the question has come up, is this an emergency situation in terms of health? Were we put in a lot of emergency situations? And technically, it's not an emergency situation, because we could do it at the next reading. But I don't want to hold up progress. Mr. Ray has been paying his fees from what I asked at the last committee meeting. And I don't, and I kind of thought about it, I don't want to hold up the situation. So there was one concern, that concern was addressed, I won't address that publicly. So I'm ready to go. But I wanted to get, I'm glad Mansell brought up, I want to get the feel that the other council people are in the emergency piece, because we can't be loose with emergency. Emergency is emergency.
Non-emergency.
That was my only trepidation. Okay?
Counselor Gay?
Thank you, Counselor President. If I could go back to the emergency piece, just because, so that the residents understand, this is not an emergency. This has been in the works for months. So it's listed here as an emergency, just to expedite the process, so that he can get the land, tear down the land, do whatever kind of building he needs to do while the weather's good. This is not something he just decided to do yesterday. This has been in the works for months. So if you want to look at it as a, as a health and safety issue, we do have abandoned builds over there, that, that's health and safety right there. So it is.
No, that's not it.
It is, and it could be.
No.
And it has asbestos. So if you want to look at it health and safety, emergency, it does qualify, and it has needed to move this thing through its phase. There's no, no point in slowing this up. Thank you.
Vice President Willer?
You know, I, the condition the city's in, in my opinion, most of the stuff is an emergency. The city's been fracturing for the longest, getting some of the stuff done that needs to be done. This is a building that has asbestos, it's a hazard, it's open, half of it probably collapsed on the inside. Let's get rid of it before somebody gets hurt. That's what I say.
I have no problem with the hearts of yourself. This is, this is an emergency status connected to additional projects. I approved the first project. You know, personally, I'm excited. I'm not asking or telling anybody here, I'm just making a general statement. From where I stand, you guys, the votes are here, so I'm just making a statement. Resolution 30-15, whether or not I send it back into the committee or send it forward, the weight of the full council is on this piece of legislation, not just me. Okay? So with regard to that, I just had some pause about not having a monetary value to giving these parcels over, whether it was $100,000 or $200,000 spent, it was $70,000, I guess, going to go towards this demolition and some, some, some work done with the fence, a more defensive, breakfast break. So my thoughts towards this is that, you know, I know we move very quickly, and we move very quickly in anticipation that we're attracting business. I'm fine with that. It's just that, you know, we just still need to have all of our interests weighed in on the situation. We can have 100 developers lined up outside, doesn't mean we have to go forward with everything that somebody puts in force, but naturally, East Cleveland has done that over the last 25 years, and that's why we don't have a city hall. We don't, we have builders who have built things, you know, they built Shaw High School, they still have to come through here, but they built Shaw High School, messed up the sewer down there, and you know, and the power grid down there, and nobody said anything about that. But I'm just saying that we, this council is in charge of the development of the city. We just, sometimes we let things slip through our fingers without a monetary value connected to it, and I'm sure that if you went to any other city and they had a land they planned, you're still going to have to pay for it with your expansion. I'm not holding a gun to anybody's head saying expand. You expand it because you want to expand it.
I've heard all three councilors, and you have sort of justified the safety issues.
Not.
It's a safety issue as far as it's been sitting up there on the high law, and.
They're making this up.
May I speak, please? And you've tried to justify it as a safety issue. You went on to talk about emergency, and I haven't seen an emergency here. And just to be quite honest with you guys, I don't think there's anything up here that's really humorous. I'm saying what you all try.